Time to do my stuff at home like you were.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Rarica City Council Meeting, February 202024. This will be the closed session portion of our meetings tonight, starting at 5:30. Do we have any public comment at this time? All right, no public comment. I will close the public comment portion and we'll go into our closed session. Evening, everybody, and welcome to the Rarica City Council for February 20th, 2024. We are starting our regular session at 6:37. Thank you for your patience. We did have closed session meeting this evening at 5:30. We do not have any reportable action to report. So please join me and the rest of my city council and staff for the Pledge of Legions. Just want to remind everybody in the audience and in the building to silence their cell phones at this time. All right, thank you. So item number five, special presentations under announcement. This time slot is for informational presentations, appointments, and or awards to be extended by the city council or to this or to the city council. Mr. Lib, do you have any special presentations at this time?
Not this evening, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on to item number six. This is public comments. Public participation is welcomed invited at all city council meetings. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the regular agenda. If your items concern an item noted on the regular agenda, please address the council when that item is open for public comment. The city request that persons addressing the city council refrain from making personal slanderous, profane, or disruptive remarks. Council members been recognized by the mayor may ask clarifying questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken by the city council during the public section, public comment section of the meeting. Under the Brown Act, the city councils prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the posted agenda. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as items, other items not included on the agenda. If your comments concern an item listed under the public hearing or new business section of the agenda, please address the council when that item is open for public comment. Please speak into the microphone from the podium, putting electronically just up and down to accommodate the speaker. Please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments. Please address the council as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide a minimum of seven copies. These become public record. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Since the council is unable to take action on issues not on the agenda, your matter may be referred to staff for follow-up or placed on future agenda. The public comment period is not intended to be a question and answer period or conversations with the city council or city staff. At this time, do I have any public comment? Yeah, come to the podium, please, please state your name.
Yeah, my name is Bessie Grant, and I just wanted to make a public comment for my grandmother Judy Grant for the resident or for 318 Herzog. Um, so she wanted me to apologize that she's really sick right now. Otherwise, she wouldn't be here. It's kind of hard because we really don't know like about like all this stuff and she's getting a little bit older. So she has a harder time understanding things too. So it's kind of been difficult. And I just wanted to apologize because we're trying to, we were trying to do its things as best as we can. And it kind of got difficult because I lost my job too. And then, you know, it was pretty hard. So, um, I don't, I don't know how this goes. I think that's it. Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay. Any other public comment at this time? No, okay. We will move on to item number seven. This is consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by one motion unless the any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. A approval ratification of payments issued from January 29th, 2024 through February 10th, 2024. B cash balances budget, actual and fiscal performances reports for September 2023. C cash balances budget to actual and fiscal performance reports for October 2023. D court investment report for September 2023. E approval of minutes of the regular meeting held on February 6th, 2024. F approval of minutes of the special meeting held on February 4th, 2024. G adoption of resolution 24-07, resolution of the city council approving upper and lower, lower Green Horn reservoir closures for the Karuk Youth Leadership Program, special event known as Dash Into Spring, a 5K walk slash fundraising event. H approval of resolution 2024-08, residents of city council approving the notices of special assessments for cost recovery for abatement costs of the following properties. 1026 Bluebird Street, such as parcel number 062122490-000. Owner is the last name of Wilson. 1022 Bluebird Street, such as parcel numbers 062122480-000. Owner, last name of Hoffman. 318 Herzog Boulevard, APN, such as parcel number 053236100-000. Owner is the last name of Grant. 216 State Street, such as parcel number 05421325000. Owner, last name of Boran, care of last of Lindsay. I authority to publish their proposed request for proposal to conduct, conduct a compensation study for the city of Rarica. The recommended city can or action before you is the motion to adopt this consent agenda, sorry, agenda for the city council of the city of Rarica as presented. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
I have a motion from Councilman Baker. Councilman McCoy?
I'll second Councilman Baker's motion.
I have a first one, Councilman Baker, second firm, Councilman Proton McCoy. I'll do roll call. Councilman Cake?
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Proton, Councilman McCoy?
Aye.
Mayor Middleton, I, I, the motion passes five to zero for the consent agenda. Item number eight, we don't have no old business. So number nine. This is for the public hearing, public hearing protocol. Mayor will describe the purpose of the public hearing. City staff will provide the staff report. City staff will respond to questions from the city council. Mayor will open the public hearing. Public wanting to comment will come to the podium, provide the city clerk with their name and address and provide their comments. Mayor will close the public hearing. City council will deliberate and an action item will act on the item. So our public hearing is item number nine, public hearing. This is the discussion possible action. I conduct public hearings regarding three community development block grant CD BG projects and adopt resolution 2024 dash 09 approving planning grant documents. The city municipal projects manager will present the staff report for these public hearings.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Cindy Lynch, Municipal Projects Manager. As we said, this is, these are public hearings for three CDBG projects that are ready to be closed out. The State Department of Housing and Community Development administers the CDBG grant program, which authorizes the use of grant funds to assist low and moderate income persons, households, and communities. Since February of 2020, the city of Rarica has applied for and received a total of $4,750,000 in CDBG grants. And three of these projects are now complete and the grant contracts with HCD may be closed out. To close out a CDBG grant pro, grant contract, the city is required to conduct a public hearing for each grant project to solicit input regarding the expenditures and accomplishments of the funding received under the contract. And to then to submit the required closeout documents to HCD. And a planning grant, which is our first item, also requires a council resolution accepting the grant deliverable documents. And the three completed projects are the historic Carnegie Building Rehabilitation Planning Project, which was a community development planning grant. The Rarica Main Street Water System Improvement Project, which was a non-housing over the counter grant for construction. And the third is why was the Rarica Madron Hospice Bus Purchased PI waiver project, which is a program income only grant. Is further details about the projects are going to be read into the record during the public hearings. And the public hearing notice and the Carnegie Building Planning Grant documents were in the link to the agenda, resolution 2024-09 for council to approve is attached in the agenda. As it stands, there is no physical impact from these recommended and requested actions. Mr. Mayor, nothing further unless you have questions.
Does council members have any questions at this time? All right, looks like no questions. Thank you so much for your work and all this. We really appreciate it. I will now introduce the public hearings for the three city CDBG projects to be closed out. The purpose of the public hearing, public hearings will be to update residents on the activities and accomplishments of these three projects listed in this agenda item. The public hearing notice was published in both the Reading Record Searchlight and the Siski Daily News on February 7th, 2024. This notice was also posted on the city websites events calendar and the city hall bulletin board on February 8th, 2024. The city council meeting agenda was posted in advance with the Brown Act. Since February, February 2020, the city has applied with several, for several CDBG grants and has received a total of $4,750,000 in grants for five projects. The city has also expended $633,000 and accumulated the CDBG program income PI program income totaling over $35,000 that can be expended on the CDBG projects or programs or else be returned to the state. I vote up this public hearing number one, historic Carnegie Building. Now I'd like to formally open the CDBG public hearing regarding the historic Carnegie Building Rehabilitation Rehabilitation Planning Project. City municipal project manager, manager will present the project update.
Thank you.
If I can spit it out, thank you.
Item for discussion, CDBG agreement number 20-CDBG-12037 for the historic Carnegie Building Rehabilitation Planning Project, which is a community development planning grant. In February 2020, the city had a public meeting soliciting potential CDBG project applications. One request was for planning funds to develop a bid ready construction project to rehabilitate the Carnegie Library Building located at 412 West Minor Street. The city was awarded a $250,000 CDBG planning grant with the Siskiyou Economic Development Council, SDC, as the grant sub recipient to engage in and supervise, to engage and supervise consultants for the necessary planning work. The planning project was completed in September of 2023. Regarding the accomplishments, the rehabilitation work is not a city project and won't be funded by CDBG. However, once the works complete, the Carnegie Buildings intended to provide a centrally located shared community space for local nonprofit organizations and other entities to collaborate and to coordinate providing community services for the citizens of Rarica. ADA modifications and structural improvements are projected to benefit an estimated 4,540 low to moderate income Rarica residents as well as about 1,045 persons under 65 with disabilities, according to census data, who'd benefit from accessing the proposed services. And the grant activities funded were the activity budget for non-resident historic preservation and planning. $233,000 was expended on historic structure report, environmental reports and archaeological, sorry, architectural and engineering reports and plans to prepare the project for construction. The general administration budget was $17,000 and that was spent on general administration activities for the project and grant. The full $250,000 in awarded funding was used for this project. And Mr. Mayor, if council has any questions?
Thank you, Cindy. Council, do you have any questions at this time? No? Okay. At this time, I would like to open the hearing for public comment. Anyone with questions, comments, or suggestions, please identify yourself by name before you speak. The city clerk will include your name in the minutes. Public comments.
Hi, thank you. Tanya Douse with the Siskiyou Economic Development Council. And I just want to take a minute to give you a quick update. First, I would like to say thank you for sponsoring this grant on behalf of our organization's work and the collaboration that we do have been working with the city on for so many years. We have a long history of collaborating with the city and this project is just one really fine example of working together on a planning activity and then moving it forward into implementation and eventual rehabilitation of the project. So I hope that we get to do more like this. This also taught me how important it is to spend the time doing the planning well on the front end of a project. And how by taking the time to invest in planning, it positions you well for success going forward. And then finally, I just want to say really a heartfelt thank you to Cindy. So she's kind of an unsung hero that we don't often get an opportunity to acknowledge, but she has the patience of a saint. And she's hung with this, this, these CDBG projects are really heavy to administer. And she just, she does a just a great job representing the city in her work.
Thank you, Mrs. Douse. Yes, and thank you to Cindy. She puts in a ton of work and I know she's probably more comfortable of being behind there doing the work than being up here. So we've, we thank her. That's for sure. That's for sure. Any public, further public comment at this time? Anybody else? No? Okay. There's no other further comments. This public hearing will be closed. Formal public hearing on this project, public, sorry, I'll start over. Before formal public hearing for this project is concluded. The closeout of this planning grant requires city council adoption, resolution 2024 dash 09 to the document, the acceptance of the grant deliverables, which are historic structure report, environmental review reports, documents, engineered plans and specifications. What are the wishes of the council?
So moved.
I have a motion from Councilman Cake.
I'll second the motion.
I'm sorry, a second from Councilman Baker. I will do roll call. Councilman Cake?
Aye.
Councilman?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, hold on. Okay, we got to back up.
Would you repeat the motion, please?
The motion is to, I'm sorry, I click back here. Yeah, let me go back here.
It's on the bottom of page three of the agenda package. And I can restate it for the council. It's a adopt resolution.
There you go. I'm sorry, I just found it. Go ahead, though.
Yeah, it's a adopt resolution 2024-09 approving planning grant documents. I vote aye.
Okay. So just to go back, I had a motion for Councilman Baker, correct? Oh, sorry, I mixed it up. I had the motion from Councilman Cake, the second for Councilman Baker. I'll go back to roll calls just so we're not confused. Councilman Cake?
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Proton McCoy?
Aye.
And I, Mayor Middleton. Is it yes? So the motion passes five to zero. Okay. Public hearing number three, we will now have.
Sorry.
Oh, two, did I skip? Man, I'm just trying to hurry us out here.
I don't blame you.
Sorry, I turned the page. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, sorry. Public hearing number two. We now have the next public hearing. I'd like to formally open the CDBG public hearing regarding the Main Street Water System Improvement Project. Our project, projects manager will now present and the project update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item for discussion is CDBG agreement number 20-CDBG-12091 for the Rarica Main Street Water System Improvement Project, which was a non-housing over the counter grant to do the construction. In September 2021, the city was awarded the over the counter CDBG funding grant in the amount of three and a half million dollars for the Main Street Water System Improvement Project. Contractor for the project was Allen Gill Construction Incorporated. And a notice of completion was filed with Siskiyou County Clerk on October 28th, 2022. The accomplishments of the project where the project work was done just before the Caltrans Highway 3 rehabilitation project on Main Street, which is also State Highway 3, was done to prevent the very old water lines in Main Street from being destroyed and thereby disrupting the city's entire water system. The project replaced, upsized, and relocated over 11,000 linear feet of water lines and replaced many old fire hydrants and water meter boxes. These water system improvements essentially benefit the entire city of Rarica, which has a low to moderate income percentage of 59.76, according to census data. But the specific low to moderate income benefit would be approximately 4,540 residents. The activities funded were strictly the water system improvements. Total of about 5.3 million was expended on the entire project, including city match funds from water capital project reserves. The initial CDBG grant amount of 3.5 million was spent on this construction. The city later added 550,000 of accumulated CDBG program income to that budget in order to help offset the city's portion of the overall project costs, resulting in a total of $4,050,000 in CDBG grant funds expended on the project. And Mr. Mayor, if council has any questions?
Open up questions for the council. They have any? No? Okay. No questions from the council. At this time, I would like to open up the hearing for public comment. Anyone, questions, comments, or suggestions, please identify yourself by name before you speak. And the city clerk will include your name in the minutes. Anybody for public comment? Okay. Then I will close the, public hearing will be closed on this. Okay. Now we're at number three, correct?
Yes.
Public hearing number three, we now have the final CDBG public hearing. I'd like to formally open the CDBG public hearing regarding the Madron Hospice Bus Purchase. Thank you guys for coming.
Oh, there's only one more. Okay.
They weren't that excited, I don't think. Okay, I'll start, I'll start back over. I'm sorry. Okay, public hearing number three. We now have the final CDBG public hearing. I would like to formally open the CDBG public hearing regarding the Madron Hospice Bus Purchase, a CDBG public service project. The projects manager, projects manager will now present the update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item for discussion here is CDBG agreement number 21-CDBG-PI-00001 for the Yarica Madron Bus Purchase Program Income or PI waiver project. This was a PI only grant. The city requested permission from HCD to use $100,000 of accumulated program income to purchase a nine passenger van for Madron Hospice. The project was approved and the grant award executed in March 2021. While the actual procurement took far longer than expected due to the COVID-19 pandemic supply chain issues, the bus was delivered to Madron Hospice staff in January of 2023. Regarding the accomplishments, Madron Hospice provides multiple services for the city seniors. The senior transportation program involves transporting senior citizens to and from congregate dining at the senior center, which is located in city's community center at A10 North Oregon Street, as well as transporting senior citizens for shopping, doctor's appointments, and various other places as needed. Since this public service project benefits the limited clientele of senior citizens in Rarica, it's presumed to principally benefit low and moderate income persons. The new ADA compliant bus is replaced an older bus that was near the end of its useful life. And it's expected to provide many years of service for Madron's transportation program. The activities funded, the activity buzz, the activity budget was public service limited clientele and it was the entire allocated $100,000. The bus purchase price was $85,406.91, leaving $14,593.09. It was disencumbered from the project. Since this remaining amount is below the federalization threshold amount, it was absorbed back into the city's program income fund. Mr. Mayor, if anyone has questions?
I'll go to the city council for any questions? Nope. No? All right. Okay. At this time, I would like to open the hearing for public comment. Anyone with questions, comments, or suggestions, please identify yourself by name before you speak. The city clerk will include your name in the minutes. Any public comment? Okay. I will close public comment. The public hearing will be closed. This completes agenda, agenda item number nine, A.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy, for everything again and all your hard work. We really appreciate it. Okay. So we go on to item number 10. This is new business, community development director. This is agenda title, General Plan 2044 Vision Statement and Guideline Principles. This item will be a presentation of the General Plan 2044 Draft Vision Statement and guiding principles developed and approved by the Planning Commission. The city council will review and discuss the vision statement and either one, give direction on changes or two, approve the visioning statement and guiding principles to include in the draft 2044 General Plan. Good evening.
Good evening. Unfortunately, we lost the Boy Scouts and I'm a little sad. Wanted to tell them my item was a little bit more exciting. Hello, I'm very excited to be here with you today. And while Cindy's pulling up the presentation slides, you do have copies. Oh, thank you. In your packet available and a lot of this is a repeat from the Planning Commission meetings, if you had a chance to look at those. But we are finally at a point where we are ready to present to you a draft vision statement and guiding principles. So this is based off of the public input that we've taken from our community engagement as well as the Planning Commission discussion and drafting the vision statements and guiding principles over the past couple months. Next slide, please. So what we're doing today is we're presenting you with a vision statement. So these are forward thinking positive statements and you can kind of think of them as an aspirational statement. And I'll stand back here because there's a little bit of feedback. And these offer us direction as staff as well as offers direction to future city councils on what the direction of the city should be for the next 20 years. And so the planning horizon for our general plan is a 20 to 25 year document. We've chosen to plan out to 2044. Hopefully, we should have a draft done this year, then goes into an environmental impact report process to comply. to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act. And then we'll also be presenting you seven guiding principles. So the vision statement is kind of something similar to what would be called a commander's intent in the military, which is basically, it's kind of the overall objective that we're trying to get to. But it's broad enough that while we're going through the next twenty years, it gives us some flexibility into how we're going to get there to that vision, but it still gives us that guiding star in the sky of that's the direction we're going. We might just have to kind of cruise around a little bit based off of external factors. So again, none of us in planning could have predicted COVID nineteen, but when we have these types of visioning statements, we go into that type of situation, knowing exactly this is the direction we need to keep going, but we need to be flexible and adapt to these other factors that happen over the next twenty years. Excuse me. And these guiding principles, again, are very important statements of how we're going to focus on certain things going forward. There will be guiding principles in each of the elements specific to that element. So if you go back to the housing element that focuses on housing, and so there's some guiding principles that we bring up in there, but for the most part, these overarching guiding principles will be completed throughout the entire document and integrated into every element as we go forward. If you could go to the next slide, please. So building a vision statement, we did ten opportunities for the general public. This includes our visioning survey that we had open for exactly eleven months. We had public workshops, focus groups. We had about four hundred and fifty-two estimated individuals. We did not keep an exact account at each event, but this is a combination of everyone that we had counted at those events, as well as the results from the visioning survey. And we estimated about forty percent of the people at each of these events were new individuals. So we tried to keep track of, you know, are we seeing the same faces at every event? Are we reaching out to different types of people we don't normally see at these meetings? As you can see, we try not to do just workshops and in-person meetings, because it may not be accessible to certain people who work different hours, who may not have the ability to come here due to childcare, or just are generally not interested in coming up in front of people and speaking. So we want to make sure as we move forward with other planning initiatives that we're offering a number of different public engagement opportunities to allow for that flexibility. So during this visioning process, we noticed that there were a couple of different demographic groups that were not well represented by our first push for public engagement. So if you could go to the next slide, please. We presented to the Planning Commission a couple of concerns. So one of the things that we have is that we have a about thirty percent or a third of our population is under the age of nineteen, who are not typically engaged in survey work online. They're not typically engaged in your type of meetings. I was hoping to get some today. So we wanted to make sure that these individuals who are going to see quite a bit of the next twenty years in our city, hopefully staying with us for the full twenty, and making sure that they're represented in the public outreach and understanding what their concerns are, what their needs are for the future. They're not typically represented in a lot of planning nationally, and it's something that we as a profession are working on trying to engage them more as we move forward. And then we also had a very low count of people who are experiencing low income status and who are unhoused population. So we did reach out to the Community Resource Center with our survey. We also translated the survey into Spanish. You do have a large number of people who are Spanish-speaking primarily in the, in the community, about nine point three percent of your community. Once that threshold reaches ten percent, we are required by state law that everything is in Spanish. And so at this point, everything that we're producing out of the general plan will be done in both English and in Spanish, because we are right at that tipping point of having a pretty decent-sized population rely primarily as on Spanish as their primary first language. And so we wanted to make sure that we were reaching those different demographics. Additionally, our Hispanic population has seen a three hundred percent increase in population since the last census. So they are increasing in representation in the community, and so we wanted to make sure that they were covered with some of our outreach materials. And so we programmed for additional public outreach engagement with youth, specifically within Jackson Street School, the high school Seventh Day Adventist. Adventist? Thank you. I forgot to grab my water to bring it down here. And so we wanted to make sure that we were covering this whole thing. So we wanted to make sure we hit these groups, and so we did go back out for additional public engagement. During this time, we also did keep the, the survey open. So other members of the public who were not part of these target groups were also allowed to continue to submit surveys throughout this process. And if you'll go to the next slide, we do just have kind of some of the images of the various events that we did. On the right-hand side of the screen, on that slide, you'll see an example of a site plan that one of the fifth and sixth graders made. So what we did with those site plans is we took a look at what people were focusing on, different topic areas, different types of land uses. We had a really great time planning out. Actually, these are all vacant parcels throughout the city of Way Rika, and I had them actually do their desired site plan on vacant parcels. And some of them had some really great ideas for how those can be used. Some were not as reasonable, like a Lamborghini dealership, but some of them were much more interesting, like a new facility for animal shelters, having community gardens and different factors such as those. And then in the bottom right-hand side is one of the photos from engaging the seniors at Way Rika High School and talking about similar topics as planning out for the future. So I think most of you were able to attend our intergenerational workshop. That was a really well-attended item. We did the same type of exercise with the high school students specifically. The seniors talking about where, what do they see the issues in five, ten, twenty years? What are the issues now? And talking about different perspectives from there and getting their input on that, and making sure that that input gets to the Planning Commission as well as yourself. And so we do have all of that raw data available for viewing on our general plan website, if you're interested in the raw data. And then some of these other pieces are just different activities that we did. We did have a workshop where we did a participatory budgeting exercise, which is basically people getting a representation of how much they pay in taxes to the city, and then giving them a number of different services and programs, and then they basically vote with their Way Rika bucks. And then they kind of show where their priorities are listed. We also did provide them the opportunity to get blue Way Rika bucks, which are additional taxes that they were in favor of, and we kind of divided out the different services with those activities, which is really fun to do and get people thinking about how their tax dollars are at work, and as well as, you know, setting new priorities for their tax dollars through this process. And so next slide, please. So we took all of this input and we divided into five different common themes and topic areas, and you'll see there are two highlighted items. And so this is healthcare and mental health care, which we had grouped under a healthy community. These two items, healthcare specifically, was mentioned by every single demographic, so young, old, low income, higher income, individual, people of color, those who are white, non-Hispanic. Nearly every single person touched on healthcare in some way, shape, or form, either needing more variety of health services offered, more comprehensive care, pediatricians, veterinarians. We did kind of rope that into healthcare a little bit. And then, uh, mental health care was something that the Planning Commission felt was an extremely strong item that also came out of it, and also separating out mental health care from the unhoused population. So one of the biggest things that we had concerns about, and we had heard feedback from the younger population that we engaged, is that mental health care is sorely needed right now. We have a lot of instances of higher depression and anxiety rates in younger individuals. They just came out of COVID nineteen, which was very isolating, and this also extends to people who are over the age of sixty-five. If you haven't read the new report on loneliness and what loneliness can do to your overall health as you get older and being interconnected with everyone else in the community, but this was, these two topic areas were the most unifying of pretty much everyone in the city, is that they want better healthcare and they want more healthcare options. And so going through these, we divided the input into a series of numbers. So if you want to just click the next one. So within housing, what we heard the most was affordability of housing, variety of housing types, and ultimately home ownership. Although home ownership was not the primary interest topic area, it was presented in about thirty to forty percent of the responses is that people are still planning to purchase a home at some point in their life. Now, I think what we found with the youth is that they're looking more twenty years out for purchasing their first home, which would put them at around thirty-seven, thirty-eight in most cases. And so what we're looking at is homeownership is still something that people want, but they're just not assuming they're going to get it in five years anymore. It's not something that's going to be first on their list. The first thing on their list is getting an affordable unit and being able to move out from their homes is a focus. The next is food. This is mainly in the youth populations. They were interested in food as a topic area, if you want to click, please, Cindy. And the two items that were in here was supporting agriculture and farmers and having that local connection to your food source, and then also having enough healthy food, which we would catalog as food security is a big issue for the youth. They're very concerned about having enough healthy food options. Although we did see a lot of the youth interested in more fast food options, there were a lot more individuals who wanted to see more restaurants, more sit-down, more healthy options, things that are in the schools, being able to do their own gardens and have that access is really important to those individuals. And I think that plays into the overall kind of discussion that we had in the visioning survey around what does it mean to be a small town and to be rural? And some of the things you'll see here is, we didn't really see any input in the visioning survey around small towns and rural being spatially oriented. So it wasn't necessarily people saying, we need to stay at five thousand people, we need to get small size-wise. But really, what we saw in the input was people wanting to connect with their neighbors, wanting to know who the people are around them, wanting to know where their food comes from, wanting to take pride in, in their local economy. And so the rural and small-town character for the city of Way Rika, the majority of the input that we got was really related to that sense of connection, that connection to the land, connection to people, and connection to your community and being proud of those aspects. And so we've tried to put that through all of the common theme areas as we move forward, and you'll see with the guiding principles. So if we go to the next one, healthy community is our catch-all for a number of items that we have, and it's just another clip from you, Cindy. Thank you. So again, healthcare, mental health care, safety being one of them, recreation, social events and connection with others. And then we did put water security within a healthy community as well, and maintaining your water source is a very important topic. It is something that people are concerned about. It is a little bit further out in the timeline, but it is something that was mentioned throughout the input that we received. So the next one is employment and education, and then another clip. Thank you. Job diversity was a really interesting topic. A lot of people were all over the board. They want to see more blue-collar jobs. They want to see more white-collar jobs. They want to see more remote jobs. And so those were the three areas that people had mentioned. I would say that based on the amount of input that we got, they're probably all equally weighted, that people want to see those variety of jobs. Overall, people want to see good jobs. They want to see good-paying jobs. The youth are very realistic in that they know that they're not going to get their dream job straight out of high school or college, which is really interesting. They're very realistic in terms of, I know that I'm going to have to get a lower-income job and work my way up to what I want to get. Another thing too is better education, better schools, better options for education programming outside of the schools, the need for education camps, athletic camps, different things throughout the summer and winter seasons outside of the typical school setting is something that was brought up by not only the high school students, but also other individuals in the community. Continuing education is a huge concern for everybody in the community. There's a big push for people over sixty-five having access to community classes in pottery or community dance classes, being able to do that activity, and again, connect with others, see others, and have this ability to, you know, visit with others by learning a new skill or trade. There's a lot of interest in continuing education for new business owners. That's something that people had kind of listed wanting to see more of, is they want new businesses. But there are other people who don't really quite know where to go to get that training, to be able to do a business plan, to be able to feel confident in budgeting and finances. And so continuing education, College of the Siskies or some other programming is really important to fill that void. And finally, tourism was mentioned. I will note, it was not the primary interest of the input that we got, but there is a lot of interest in some types of tourism that South County that cannot provide. For example, OHV parks Way Rika and the surrounding area is much more open to motorized recreation as opposed to South County. And so I think there is an ability to allow people to do that type of recreation here. If you haven't heard about plans and aspirations to have a kind of an OHV route from Way Rika to the coast through the Klamath National Forest, that kind of goes into this tourism focus for employment and education. And finally, this is the most interesting one, is people are super interested in energy here. And so a lot of this goes to energy independence. That's the ultimate thing people want to do. People don't like the high rates. They don't like having control over the energy types that they have. Vehicle fuel types are a really interesting focus for the youth population. And this also ties into employment and education, because if you think about the change in fuel types, hydrogen, water-based, electrical vehicles, we don't really have any mechanics for those types of machinery yet. Even if you take a single occupancy vehicles out of it, machinery in construction is changing. All of these things, compressed natural gas. And so these were really interesting kind of conversations with the senior class, you know, talking about not just relying on electric vehicles, but what other types of energy types do we have available? And then what are the new jobs in those energy and tech fields to facilitate that? And being able to have options, and again, having that energy independence and having some more local grid options for people. And again, it goes back to this kind of connection, that kind of ownership that people have. And so next slide, please. And so we kind of went through and looked at the priorities now, then and later, based on the intergenerational workshop, as well as the workshopping with the high school students. And so if you could please do the first clip. So priorities now were, were items that were listed the most often in the visioning survey. In the visioning survey, we also asked the question of what should the city focus on in the next five years? And so this is part of that input, as well as those other two workshopping focus groups that we talked about. Housing affordability, that's the biggest thing. People really want affordable housing now. They want affordable housing it for the youth. They want affordable housing for aging parents and aging families. They really, that's a, that's a huge priority for people. Entertainment and social events, just getting more things to do. One of my favorite things I heard at a workshop is there's nowhere to take your date. So if you want to go on a date night, there's really not many options in the city for that, outside of going to a bar or a restaurant. And so that was a big focus, that people really want to see more entertainment options, especially not around alcohol, things that they can go and do and connect with each other. Daycare, camp care, uh, different events and park facilities are really important right now. It's extremely expensive. And a lot of people did list this as being kind of something they're concerned about moving forward in the next five years. Good employment for entry-level workers and better pay, homeless shelter and mental health services for the unhoused population, and more retail options specifically around clothing and other types of amenities. A lot of the youth are really looking for those clothing opportunities. They just don't feel like there's an ability for them to go and shop for anything in the city. And I think that's echoed through a lot of different demographics. You know, retail has changed significantly with online purchasing, and so that's something we, they feel needs to be addressed now. And then priorities then is the next option, which is in the next ten years. These are kind of things that people have brought up as needing to be addressed. So housing options, again, in ten years, you have to think about where are you in your life? For the high school students, they were thinking, I'm going to be twenty-seven, twenty-eight. I might want to start a family at this point. You know, for them. And so housing options are important, family-oriented events and activities, and really doubling down on this. And this was every demographic talking about wanting to have more family-friendly options. More transportation options show up here. Better education, pre-K through twelve becomes more important for others. More healthcare options, as we stated earlier, local business development, and I thought it was at least aspirational to, to mention that the high school seniors wanted to end homelessness in ten years. Again, it's good to have really positive, forward-looking thoughts, whether we end it in ten years or not. And so they did prioritize that as a ten-year goal for the city. And then finally, priorities for later, in twenty years, this is when we kind of saw more of the homeownership consideration and options for homeownership, better education opportunities and continuing ed and higher education. And then this is where we started to see water security becoming more of a concern for a lot of people. And so again, just because we're presenting these items over different priority areas, it doesn't mean we wouldn't be working on these things. It just means that people, when they were thinking into the future, this is kind of where all of these different items lined up. Obviously, there are certain things in our lives that are right here, ready to go, have to address it. And there are other things that we would like to address in the future. And so hopefully, this type of slide was included, because just to communicate, when we go through the general plan, just like the housing element, we have a timing aspect in there. And so the housing element's unique. It's only eight years. And so there's an eight-year time span for those timing. But when we get to things like land use, circulation, transportation, conservation, we'll be putting timing down for each of the programs. And so this is kind of where these priorities get lined out on a timeframe, so that we understand what the priorities of the city are now that need immediate addressing. And then priorities that are great, but you know, we can put them off for a couple of years and rotate them in in a little bit of time. And so next slide, please. So this is what we have presented to you today. The Planning Commission considered this at the November twenty twenty-three meeting, as well as the January twenty-four, twenty-four meeting. And so I'm just going to give you all a second to just read that. All right. So I'm going to go over this just briefly, but basically what we've put together is trying to encompass this idea. One of the things we really heard about over the course of the public input is this first sentence, which is they want the community to continue forward. We want to be more resilient to natural disasters. We want to be more resilient to external factors like COVID nineteen, economic issues, things that we can't necessarily respond, like control. But they want us to respond in a really responsible, resilient way and making sure the community still continues to move forward. And one of the things I think is unique to the city of Waireka is the self sufficiency ax- aspect is a lot of people want to do it themselves. They want to learn and they want to be more proactive in how the community is run, how the community functions. And so I think there's a really great possibility to focus on this self sufficiency piece of making sure that as we move forward in the next twenty years, we're providing opportunities. We're not doing it for someone. We're offering them a number of different options to move forward and then they can kind of move from there and do it themselves. But it's something that was really important to a lot of people is is doing things like starting their own businesses, like looking into supporting different community events and aspects. And so that was a really important feature. We wanted to communicate through the vision statement. And then again, going back to it, we do have a very interesting history that we have here in the community. I think one aspect of it has been explored a little bit with our downtown being the minor theme and the exploration of the area. And I think there are other aspects to that history that we, you know, speak about a little bit, but I think we can definitely continue to build on that with art programs, with events you'll see in one of the guiding principles. Reenactments can be more engaged in this type of historical aspect, which can become part of the overall economy as well as just a sense of place, you know, you understand where you're at with with those types of things being put into the community. The cherishing social engagement, the community comes back to supporting those events in the community, supporting activities that bring people together and giving people a lot of different types of opportunities to do that. And then ultimately, the safe, healthy and economically secure community goes back to that health aspect that you'll see repeated throughout the guiding principles. So we'll move on to the next slide, please. So the first three guiding principles, again, this is kind of more specific of like, how are we going to get there over the next twenty years? These are the main focuses that we have. And so the first one is creating that healthy, safe and clean community that can be enjoyed by people of all ages, backgrounds, abilities and interest groups. Again, this is going back to your circumstances as a city. You have about thirty six point two percent of the households in your community have someone with a registered dis- or an eligible disability under the ADA. That's a lot. It's higher than the national average. It's higher than the state average. And so there are a lot of different types of either mobility issues, cognitive, different cognitive abilities within the community. And so creating a healthy community for those people as well as going to be very important moving forward because individuals that we accommodate through universal design, that universal design helps everyone. That's making this building more accessible, which will then eventually help everybody have a chance of opportunity into it, as well as making sure that that goes through all of our public places and spaces as we move forward. And again, as we age over the next twenty years, our bodies are not going to be the same. I rolled my ankle last Monday and it hurts a lot and stairs are not fun. And I don't know why I chose to wear heels today, but I did. And so even something like rolling your ankle and not being able to move very well, having a universally accessible facility helps me in the long run as well. And so this is talking about all different healthy spaces for those types of people. It also looks at from a lens of safety, inviting people who are not typically represented in these spaces. So, you know, specifically talking to women who experience harassment in the parks from other types of individuals, do not feel safe in the dark in your downtown. You know, engaging those individuals to make sure that we are designing, you know, the safest community that we can moving forward. And clean is pretty straightforward. Everybody wants a clean community. And so the next one is ensuring the city balances fiscal responsibility without limiting the opportunities of individuals and business success. And that goes back to evaluating the costs of what it takes to run the city and making sure that we're making very fiscally responsible decisions without necessarily limiting future development for the city and those who can develop with the current fees that we have, you know, making sure that they are paying and not necessarily selling the city short and making sure that we're balancing all of those interests as we move forward with recommendations around that. That also could be looking at an overall financial policy and ordinances around working with developments a little bit more flexibly on when certain things get implemented, how those things are paid for and making sure that things are done in a way that we want them to be done as a community without overextending the individual or the business. The third one here on the slide is removing barriers to providing healthy, sustainable and local food options through agriculture on the home household level, all the way to large scale enterprises. And so this is looking at bringing back victory gardens. If you're not familiar with that terminology, it was a big push during World War Two to grow your own food, to alleviate the food crisis that we were facing during World War Two. But it's becoming much more popular to encourage individuals to do more household farming, to do more household growing of your own vegetables and fruits and potentially even chickens. I do mention that carefully because of that. And then this goes all the way to opening up to large scale enterprises. Again, we do not really have any agriculture within the city of Waireka, ironically enough, even though agriculture is important to us. But also looking at why is that? Can we better facilitate that relationship with large scale enterprises and bring those in? I know urban farming, indoor farming is becoming more popular for produce to be more year round for that. I don't know if that's what this community wants to look into. So these are not committing you to anything at this point, but it's just showing you that we can go to a lot of different levels and really kind of bring agriculture back within the fold. And so the next two guiding principles, number four and five, exploring and establishing that identity and cultural heritage, you know, really look into the different people's ideologies, historical events through design, community events and programs. As you can see here, these are two really great examples of how design can bring those historical and cultural aspects into your community and still be incredibly engaging, be incredibly informational. And then just again, you know, bringing in those public art pieces as well and integrating those into different areas of the city. Now this could be done throughout the city as a whole, or as we go through the land use process and zoning code update, this could be neighborhood specific. For example, you could have the Discovery Park neighborhood. It could have a minor theme. It could have different aspects that we integrate into it to make it feel a little bit more special. Again, bringing that small town character, having those really unique pieces of having a different street sign. I know that sounds really simple, but those are the things that people notice. There is a really cool neighborhood in Iowa City called the Copper Neighborhood and every single household has a copper statue in the front yard. One is a grand, is the size of a grand piano and has a gentleman playing it and it's really neat. But it's little things like that that make people feel like they're in their own neighborhood and it makes people remember those aspects of your community that you want them to remember. And so doing this through design and then a community events like reenactments and then programs, again, going back to educational camps for kids during the summer, you know, giving them the opportunity to explore different aspects of our community would be really great and engaging and still meet that kind of vision and the interests of the city. And then the fifth one is similar to our second one, which is more kind of an internal guiding policy, which is creating flexibility in regulations and programs to allow individuals, businesses and visitors to live and experience the city of Waireka in their unique ways. And so this is looking at making sure as we go through a zoning code update, that we make sure people are able to do their home based business. They are able to start small and then eventually go into a commercial development or, you know, have your mom, pop store be able to transition to the new person without having to close down their doors. Looking at what does that flexibility look like? What are the programs to ensure that continuity? And you're, you know, really making sure that we have those options available for that self sufficiency piece. And finally, number six and seven. Number six is developing and maintaining exceptional recreation opportunities for residents and visitors to experience the outdoors in a variety of ways and sustain healthy lifestyles. So again, you have a lot of opportunity up here. You have great ridge lines. You have great mountain biking, hiking, a lot of city owned land that could be utilized within a bigger parks system. And so this could definitely be something that is used for our residents for a healthy lifestyle and then also attracts other individuals. I actually had someone specifically in Sacramento, completely different agency go, oh, is the Humbug hurry up happening this year? Out of nowhere. And I was like, why do you know that? And I have no idea. I need to get in contact with someone to tell you that. And so it was very interesting that these types of things, again, bring people back. It brings a sense of character and belonging that are really unique here. And then finally, this is kind of a long winded one, but I think this is something that's really important. Going back to the healthcare piece is establishing Waireka as a center for physical, emotional, psychological and social well being through state of the art facilities, programs to support residents' health journeys and through collaborations with other health focused agencies and groups. And so this is in the bottom right hand side is actually a mockup of the new emergency room expansion. This is really important to the residents is this healthcare aspect. And so there's a lot of really great example cities or case cities out there. For example, Loma Linda here in California is known as a blue zone, which means people disproportionately live longer than the average resident of the United States. And it's because they have really focused on integrating healthcare into everything that they do as a city and really looking at health as a long term, full life spectrum. And so I think this is something that the city of Waireka can be as the county seat. We already kind of serve this purpose, but it's not really organized and it's not something that I don't think we're necessarily proud of yet. You know, there's a lot of discussion around the quality of care people get in certain circumstances. And I think there's an ability to really build off of that and partner with the Kuduk tribe with their medical services as well as Fairchild Medical to really look at what are we offering? Again, there is no dialysis in Siskiyou County. There's really, there's one pediatrician I heard who just moved here. There's very few OBGYN offerings. There's no nutritionists or dieticians. And so really focusing our community on being able to provide those services county wide and to be doing a good job at it. And so that's our our final guiding principle that we're recommending for adoption with the general plan twenty forty four. So finally, today, the next slide is really just asking you to kind of discuss. We can answer any questions on the process that we took to get here. And then if you feel comfortable today, confirming the vision and guiding policies. And this is a really important step for me because this is the direction. So if you want to be the Emerald City of Oz, if you would like to be Reading, California, if you would like to be Waireka, California, you know, that is up to you. And so if this is not in the direction that you think it should go, this is now the time to have this discussion. And we can definitely, we can either go back for more public input. We can go back to the planning commission with notes. And so I want to make sure that this is something that we are in on and that I can move forward with because once I get this, these are kind of the directions that I start to draft the rest of the elements on. And so there is no rush to make this decision either. And so just wanted to present it to you tonight. And if, and again, just kind of answer any questions from here. And if you want to click again Cindy, it'll pull up the vision statement if you want to start with that one. Oh no, go back. Yeah. If you click again, it'll disappear. So there's not as many words on the screen. So yeah, I'll address any questions if you have any before you go to public comment.
All right. So I will. I don't have any questions at this time, but I might in a little bit, but I just want to say thank you for all your hard work you've done on this. And that has never been, hasn't been, I don't think it's ever been done in the city of Waireka.
Not have a vision to start with.
Correct. So the time since you were hired and hit the ground running, I think this is one of the first things, maybe not the first, but one of many, yeah, a little bit, I think I remember.
Randy didn't really give any direction when I got there, so I kind of just.
So I remember, I remember you bringing it to us and they were like, oh. We said, where's your, you know, general planner like, we're like, I don't think we have one. We didn't. So for you to put all the work in and I was quite, you know, pleased of the outreach to the citizens and the people who attended and ask, you know, the young people I sat with at the table when we had the workshop at the community center where actually Councilman Keg sat with us, they're kind of quiet at first, but then once they started getting comfortable, they were very bright, young individuals with a lot of great ideas, but very smart. Just real quick is I think it goes back to education is one of the, he was a senior at the time, so he's graduated by now. He mentioned that he'd like to see Siskiyou County or Waireka have more trade school opportunities because he was going to leave and go attend a trade school. And he didn't want to leave, but he plans on coming back once he gets his certification or degree or whatever it is that he will receive once he completes that, but he plans on coming back. And a lot of eighteen year, nineteen year olds don't really have that vision to come in back to where they're raised and to be by their family, but he was very family oriented, but he really didn't want to leave, but where he was going to go to school. So that's what he mentioned is more trade opportunities through College of the Siskies or you know, something like that. So that was, he spoke up about that. So it was great. So I just want to say thank you for everything you've done, putting this together. It's been a long road getting this together and where we're at today. So that's what I will say for now is thank you. And then I will go to council members for questions or comments.
Just come.
You want to go first? Okay. Councilman Keg.
I just want to thank you also for that, bringing, bringing the high schoolers into it was something that needed to happen. And I'd like to see that more often on a lot of the things that we do as a city, period, because that is the futures as our young, as our youth. So bringing them into the situation was awesome. I appreciate that. And yeah, that one individual that Corey was talking, Mr. Mayor was talking about was very bright young man and yeah, wanting to come back to Waireka and actually being involved. He was involved in a lot of different activities already.
Volunteering.
It was pretty amazing, all the functions he was involved in fundraisers and everything else. So that's, that's the future, you know, seeing those young kids jump in there and take over for us old geezers that have been doing it for years and these families, these functions and stuff. So I'm glad to see the young youth getting involved in it. So yeah, thank you. I just want to say thank you for all the work you've done on this.
Thank you. Hey, Councilman Keg. Tom Davis.
Juliana, did I hear you right? You said you had ten public meetings?
Yeah, well, we had ten, we had ten engagement opportunities. So we had the visioning survey. We had a series of workshops. We also did focus groups. We did include the interviews from the housing element into the input into the visioning as well. And so those all combined. So for example, we had a city council meeting, planning commission, open house, open house, high school, visioning workshop, urban design workshop. So we had a lot of different types of things, but it was ten total opportunities. And then we added the four additional at the end, so fourteen total opportunities.
That's very good. And how did you advertise those?
Yeah. So actually, we had a couple of different outreach items for that. Let me pull those up. So we did, oh, we also did do a downtown merchants. I forgot about that. So for a number of them, we did do, at one point, we had a postcard that we sent out that had three of the public opportunities listed, two of the workshops and the visioning survey that went out to all households within the city of Waireka. We advertised on the city's website. We also have a general plan website specifically for this project. And you can sign up for newsletters on that. And so we advertised all of those through that avenue as well. We posted in the paper. We went on our Facebook page. I talked about it a lot at open meetings to get people to go bribery. I did also for the intergenerational workshop, we went through, I did not actually bribe anyone. That is not real. Please don't, please don't report me. So I did actually take flyers around specifically for the intergenerational workshop, the visioning workshop for that. So we had a really nice flyer that I went downtown to all the businesses and gave out a couple of them. So we tried a lot of different opportunities for that. Quite a few of the postcards came back as individuals didn't want them, which was interesting. So we didn't do another postcard for that because it was very expensive and quite a few of them came back. And that's, we just tried everything that we could. I think the only thing we didn't do was radio and TV.
Right, pretty hard to do radio here.
Yeah.
You did yard signs as well.
Oh, I did do the yard signs as well. So we had that at the beginning of the opportunity is I had some yard signs made and we had sold them out to a couple of different people in the community with the general plan website on it. Just generally advertising that and those were up for a couple of months, just to get people interested in that.
So I guess my final question is, what did you estimate the number of folks involved?
About four hundred and fifty two.
I wrote that down. I thought I wrote it down right, but I didn't want to make a mistake.
Yeah, we did not have signup sheets at each event, so the Yeah, we did not have signup sheets at each event, so the, their estimates. And so the fifty-two kind of comes in because I know exactly how many surveys we had so that I can get more of an accurate info uh item on that. Um, I don't think we took counts of the high school class or the Jefferson School classes. So I don't think we got the total number of youth in that, but I would probably say. There are probably what, twenty, twenty-five kids per class at the high school and we did five of them. So we pretty much hit the entire graduating class last year. And then for the Jackson Street, I did five sessions with them. And they're probably close to twenty kids in each of those as well. So we probably hit about half of those in there.
That, that was really good to include those folks because they had a lot of inner interest last year. Of, of the potholes downtown is an example and, and uh, I think that was really wise. Good job, Juliana.
Thank you.
Councilman Baker.
Thank you. I'm gonna um echo uh Councilman Davis. Good job. This was um. I can tell that there was a lot of input that was received and um, I really appreciate that thought that's gone into. Um, how to put the um, visioning statement together and the guiding principles. Um, and you did, you know, I'm fascinated with focus groups. So you mentioned focus groups. So what was the makeup of your focus group?
So technically the high school students, the Jefferson School would be considered a focus group where you have an activity for them. And they're a very specific demographic. So the students um were the primary focus groups that we had in there. Um, we really didn't do any other outreach. Um, I did get a decent number of survey responses. From lower incumbent individuals to the point that I didn't think we needed a specific focus group for them. Um, just for the education of the council, there is Senate Bill one thousand, which requires us to make very conscientious efforts. To reach out to disadvantaged communities. Um, the Caruk or another one as well. We have done a number of meetings with them. Uh, we have not presented to their council as a whole, uh, but we have met with a number of their staff members as well. And that could be considered either interagency consultation or a focus group as well. Cause they're looking at it from a very specific lens for that. Um, those were the primary ones uh that we had identified. But again, as we move forward into other topic areas, there are other groups that we may want to engage. So for example, with the housing element, the focus group was uh realtors, developers, builders. And uh lenders of uh housing lenders. And so that's where those interviews and focus groups mainly focused for that. Um, but as we move forward with other plans, so for example, after we get out of the general plan. It's been the interest of the city manager to do a redevelopment plan through, for economic development. That will most likely have business owner focus groups where we really want to drill down very specific questions for them. Oh, we did also engage the downtown merchants, which I keep forgetting that we did that as well. So that would be considered a focus group too. So.
Thank you. And again, job well done.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Clay.
I just want to thank you again, Ms. Lucasey for doing a wonderful job. I, I've had to work on these before in schools for twenty years and they're not easy to. It's hard to get focus groups together and I think you did a good job. I figured you're probably a little above six percent. Uh, yeah, of the population that you were able to include. And I think this is a great roadmap for the city for the future. For what we as a council and future councils are going to need to do and for the city manager. So I want to thank you for that. I also uh want to thank you because it seems like with this document, we're driving, we're driving the bus. The state's not driving the bus. The county's not driving the bus. The people of Waireka are driving the bus and they've told us what they want. And it's in this document. So thanks again.
Yeah. And just to um make sure the council understands too, we don't stop public outreach after this effort. This is just mainly around the visioning piece. And so as we move into like safety specifically, we'll be working on a number of public outreach workshops. For safety, which uh addresses hazard mitigation and natural disasters, um and potentially manmade disasters, if you want to include those. Um, and so we will still continue to do public outreach. It will just be very topic focused. So parks and recreation, conservation, safety. And then the land use and zoning code update aspects have their own type of public outreach plan. Um, we haven't gotten the specific one yet from uh Precision Civil Engineering is helping us with that aspect because it's a big lift. And so there will be additional public outreach and public engagement opportunities with those items as well.
Okay, great. All right. I will go to public comment. Any public comment at this time? All right. Nobody? Okay, I will close public comment at this time and then um. I'll go back to um. Item number ten. So the recommended city council action is option one. Give staff direction on visioning statement and or guiding principles or option two. Motion to approve the general plan twenty forty-four draft vision statement and guiding principles. To be included in the draft twenty forty-four general plan. What are the wishes of the council? Not everybody wants.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I will uh make the motion to approve the general plan twenty forty-four draft vision statement. And guiding principles to be included in the draft twenty forty-four.
Okay, I have a motion. Okay, I have a motion from uh Councilman Baker for option number two. Um, and a second from Councilman Davis. What are the wishes of the council? I mean, I'm sorry, real call. Yes, I'm tired. I'm tired tonight. I'm sorry, I'll do real call. Geez, I'll tell you. Um, Councilman Kay. Councilman Davis.
I.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman McCoy.
I.
And uh Mayor Middleton. I. So the motion passes five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So this is item eleven. This is city manager and staff report. City manager and staff may make brief announcements or reports at this time. Mr. Ledbetter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Waireka City Council. This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager, and I have just a very brief report, quite frankly. Um, we've been facilitating the comms ad hoc meetings. And I just want to point out to the uh city council that you'll notice that our city clerk Cindy Prohaska. Is making weekly posts on the Facebook site. Um, we're trying to utilize that uh a lot more with. Uh, usable information and posts that uh hopefully will drive. Uh, kind of engagement with the, the public. And then beyond that, mark your calendars. A week from today at five thirty PM. Uh, at the community center here in Waireka, we plan on having a fire meeting. Where we will open it up to the public to do a question and answer during public comment. To engage staff and also to engage um myself and really the fire chief Jerry Lemus. And so we're asking obviously that the city council be in attendance for this meeting. Um, but really with the objective of just listening and there will be a presentation similar to the last meeting we had. And really trying to give the opportunity to this, the city, the public to engage staff asking questions. I know we were pretty ambitious. We wanted to try to get two of these meetings in in February. It's looking more along the lines of we'll have the one on the twenty-seventh. And then we'll recalibrate with the city council to schedule uh a follow-up meeting to have a similar question and answer workshop. With the community, just to continue to drive the conversation. So those are the only two things I have this evening. So thank you very much.
And Mr. Ledbetter, did you say five thirty next Wednesday?
No, a week, a week from today. So it would be the twenty-seventh, yeah. Tuesday, the twenty-seventh at five thirty. Uh, and officially, hopefully tomorrow, we'll be able to post the agenda and then we'll throw out um. Information to the public via, via Facebook more than likely.
Okay, great. Thank you. Chief, Chief Gilman's coming up.
Hi, everybody. Chief Gilman. I just wanted, I wish Jerry was here. I just want to say thank you to the fire department. About a week ago, we had a series of fires lit all at the same time from an arsenal that uh. Was a little busy on Sunday and the fire department was amazing. They got there and they took care. We had six fires going that I saw when I was on scene. And our fire department was able to hit that. We had help from Montague and Cal Fire and everyone else. But you know, I just, I want to say thank you to Jerry and all the firefighters. They did a great job on Super Bowl Sunday. They came out and took care of a bunch of fires. And we also had uh the week before that, just so you know, we had a serial vandal that went through and destroyed most of Waireka. Still in custody as far as I know, so hopefully that'll work out good for us. But I was pretty proud of my department. Both of those cases, we caught the person in the act at the same time the crimes occurred. So that's, that's rarity in law enforcement and we did it both times a week apart. So, but the fire department was amazing.
Great. Well, thank you for both departments, YPD and the fire department for your guys' um. Teamwork and action on those unfortunate events. That's for sure. All right. Uh, so this is item number twelve. Mayor Councilmembers report statements and requests. AB one twenty-one, two, three, four, conference and meeting report for both of any. In accordance with AB one, two, three, four, council members shall make a brief report or file a written report on any meeting, event, conference attended at city expense. Members of the council may make brief announcements, reports or request staff to report to the council on any matters of subsequent meeting. All right. Councilman Clay has nothing, so I'll go to, I'll go over here to the side. Councilman Davis.
I don't have any AB one, two, three, four.
Okay.
Items to uh report.
All right. Councilman Baker.
Uh, thank you. You know, I always have something to say. So um, I attended a finance committee meeting. Last Thursday. Um, and. We have some exciting things in the works. That's all I'll say at this time. Um, also, uh, the last couple of weeks, I've had the opportunity to go on field trips with uh Mr. Ledbetter. Uh, we did a tour of a city owned lot on foothill. And then last Friday, um, I uh was taken on a tour. Of Project Base Camp, um, which is the um homeless shelter. That is in the process of getting ready to open. And I have to tell you, I was so impressed. We met the um. Site manager, Tara, and uh she was just a wealth of information. And I'm, I'm just so impressed with the level of services that will be available to uh people through that. Facility. So that was really very exciting to me. Um, learned a lot about the homeless uh population here in Waireka. Um, and uh. I don't know, I'm actually very excited about the direction that the city and the county are going um with that project. Let me see. Um. Uh, Mr. Ledbetter, um, I do have some questions about the budget process. And so I'd like to schedule a meeting uh with uh the finance director and you. And we can talk about that uh at the end of the week.
Excellent. Sounds great.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Great. Councilman Cake.
I don't have much to report on either. I've, I've missed a couple of meetings just because I've. Sickleses in the family and everything else that was going on lately. But um, uh, we do have a. Let's see, where we at? February twenty-second, we have an H cap meeting um going on homeless housing assistance program. Um, that'll be at the Red Oak Room. So people that are, are wanting to get involved in homelessness and the direction. That we're looking at in the COC, then I, I uh definitely encourage you to attend. See if I was trying to figure out what time and it should be one. Let me see here. Shoot. I don't have the time, sorry. We're up twelve PM. Yep, twelve PM, sorry. So if anybody wants to attend that meeting, it's, it's like encouraged. If anybody wants to have their input on the direction that's going with that. Um, other than that, I don't have much to, to weigh in on. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. I attended the Lola meeting. I was by myself. Lone soldier up there all by myself. Everybody else bailed. Um, so I attended Lola meeting, but we did meet before the meeting to select committees. You remained on um your committee, so just keep on going for um Colliers or not called Colliers, but uh Laughco. Thank you. Uh, Laughco, you still remain uh Councilman McCoy on the um LTC. Um. There was some changes, but don't ask me. Um, some people were filled from other cities and an alternate. There's a couple of alternate changes, but it didn't affect our city. Uh, I remained being the president. They just, no one else wanted to do it. So they just said, oh, you're fine. I'm okay. So, so I was elected again to be the president of that committee. For all the cities and um, it was a great meeting. A couple of guest speakers. One, and I, I apologize, I've not emailed her. It's been crazy. The um president of COS, she got up and talked about uh the different programs that are coming. And one class that I was supposed to email and get back to uh Councilman King and actually the rest of you. Is they're going to be offering a um free, some free credit classes to the unhoused. To help. Get them. A step ahead to help them in their education. So that was great. Asked for a card because I wanted to know what it was, you know, what classes they were and when they're going to be available, what they're going to be available. So she said they're actually, um, because one of the questions was if the encampment on the hill. Was hurting them. And she said it did, but not as much. She said instead of. You know. Their bad situation. She's, they're turning it to a good and inviting them to participate at COS. So that was um great to hear. She was very um enthused about it. And um, so I will get with her and um find out or have her call you or email everybody. So we know about that. Um. They had a speaker from Weed. I think he was from the museum. And we talked about the history of Weed, the founder. Uh, everything. So it was, it was interesting, the history of Weed. I really didn't know too much about it. So I learned quite a bit about their museum and about the founder and how everything started down there. Um. I know there will be a lot of changes coming up and um this election, a lot of long-termers are stepping. Down and off of the city council. So there'll be a lot of new faces at the um mayor, councilmen. Um, they've all been there for quite a while and so they're going to be saying goodbye. A couple of them, I was sad to see that they're going to be going. But they're um. Going to, but our jobs here are temporary, but um they're going to be leaving. Um. And who knows what happens. But a couple of us here sitting at this table. So um anyways, that's all I have. It was a great um meeting. Um, wish you guys were there. And um with that, I will end it. And say thank you to everybody for coming and um all the reports. And it was a great meeting and everybody have a good night. Advert.